Hey Judy, good afternoon.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good.
Can you point your screen down just a bit so I can see your head?
Can I point my screen down?
That's alright, I'll leave, I'll leave if it's convenient. Move this thing back a bit.
Is that better?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. You could even... Yep, okay. Are we really gonna do all this stuff tonight?
Yes Jillian.
Ah.
Are you there? Yeah. Hey Judith, can you hear me? Judith Chandler?
Yes, good evening everyone.
Hello. We're having little technical issues we're trying to work on here, so bear with us.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you for elevating me to panelist. I could see your mouth moving, I just couldn't hear you.
Well, I'm trying to elevate some others, but it's kinda hard to do here. There we go, there it showed up, okay. There we go.
Hello.
Parli is... Let's see. See, we've got a participant named Parli, P-A-R-L-I. Can that person identify herself or himself?
Is that me? Is that Paul? Yeah, it's probably P. Arlinghaus.
Oh, okay. You've got shorthand here, thanks Paul.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, I'm about to get on a meeting, what's up? Oh, I just had Ruth working with him on the ground, he was great. Mm-hmm. Okay, did you get the ring we got? I could not see getting out of Meadow Lake. Oh, it was, it was torrential and I just pulled to the side of the road, I couldn't see anything. Sat there for twenty minutes by some farmer's house. Mm-hmm, and just poured all the way into Mark's shuffle. It was unreal.
Can you hear me?
Andrea's joined us. We have Paul, Andrea, Judy, and me.
This is Marion, can you hear me?
I can, thanks Marion.
Cassandra's here, can you hear me?
Yes Cassandra, thank you. Cassandra and Marion are two applicants for alternate positions. Uh, we do have four people, four members here. Um, let me explain a little of our problem. Um, Jillian Rossi normally conducts this meeting on the technical side. And uh, her microphone has um, decided to go on vacation. She doesn't know why, so she's working on that. And trying to make that work. Um, so she may, hopefully will log back in, so that means she has made me the host. Which means I both have to run the meeting and also run the controls, which is gonna be problematic, I assure you. So we'll see how that goes. Um. Let me kinda get situated here.
Dave, this is Denise, can you hear me?
Yeah, we have, Anthony has joined us, uh. And we have also Nate and Vanessa Nasif. And uh, so they're... It's an open meeting, so we'll keep them as observers. But I will ask them uh, if they have any comments on that open agenda part. So hang on, let me... Still playing with stuff, so bear with me. There we go.
Dave, this is Denise, can you hear me?
Just barely, I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Denise, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better, thank you.
Okay. And Lisa Walters should be joining us, but not until the Ring the Peak, so we'll need to bring her over at Ring the Peak discussion.
Guys, I'm sorry, I don't know Denise. I, I don't know what you're asking, I'm sorry. Try again please. Something about Ring the Peak and we need to change the discussion, but I...
No, Lisa Walters will be joining us, so when we do Ring the Peak, we'll bring her over.
Yes, okay. I'll watch the, the side screen here to see. Well then, let's go ahead and get started, it's about 6:05. And um, looking at the agenda, uh, so we'll call the meeting to order. Um, first confirm, we have a, a quorum, uh, we have Andrea Satella, Judith Karnack, Paul Arlinghaus. And me, uh, and Anthony, uh, TJ Maltese, so we clearly have a quorum. Uh. We do have these openings for alternate members, uh, right now we have no alternates, um. Because Nancy Wilson uh, had resigned, her position was alternate, uh, of course she was a longstanding regular member. Of her number of years, so we have three openings, we received applications from Marion Saruzzi. And Cassandra Bresnahan, I have spoken with both of them and just given them a little... Uh, kinda welcome and orientation and tried to answer some of their questions. Part of the process for them to become an alternate is to uh, attend a meeting, and so they both are uh, listening in. Today, tonight, um. Yep, got them, and um... I'm not positive on the protocol here, so if one of the more senior members remembers, um, step in here. But the, uh, I think the process is for after they've attended a meeting. For us to uh, make a recommendation to city council on whether to appoint them as an alternate or not. And um, so again, we're gonna ask them to participate in this meeting today. Um, so that we can get a sense of them. Uh, in the packet was the applications from both Marion and Cassandra. Uh, also with their resumes, um, telling you about their man-to-experiences and participation. As well as their professional and career, um... Activities, um, so anyway, let's see who we have here. We do have Cassandra, and I've gotta make sure I get uh... Yeah, Marion is also there, okay. Okay, um. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes, we have minutes from May 28th meeting, um. Does anyone have any revisions to make on that? That was included in your packet, and that was... I'm gonna try to do this during the... The meeting, that's uh, pages sixteen through nineteen on the PDF packet. Are there any comments? Any um, suggestions for revision? I did not have any myself, anybody else? Okay, hearing none, uh, let me get rid of some mutes here. Actually, I think all the members are muted, um. Yep, let me take care of Judith here if I can, guys just bear with me. That's what it takes to get this going. Panelists. Judy, okay. Judy should be... Yeah. Can I have a motion, uh, to approve the minutes? If anybody can speak and we can hear. Judith is still working, alright Judith, I'm working on it.
Uh, Dave, this is Andrea, I have a motion to approve the uh...
To approve the uh, the May 28th meeting, uh, minutes, thank you Andrea. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright. Thank you, and uh, any more discussion on that? Probably not, don't hear anyone or see anyone? All in favor of approving the May 28th minutes as drafted, if they can raise their hand and say aye?
Aye.
We're good, yep, that's approved by everyone, thank you guys, let's move on. To the next one, um, the agenda review, does anyone have any comments or revisions about tonight's agenda? You'll notice it's not the usual format, we changed it so that we could take uh, the clerk. And uh, the city administrator up front, so the order's a little different, but... Any concerns about that? If not, then we'll accept the agenda and just keep moving forward, uh, let's do the public comment on non-agenda items. Something I usually forget to do, let me ask uh... Nate and Vanessa are um... I'm trying to unmute them.
No, just here, um, just here learning, this is my first OSAC meeting, so I appreciate it Dave. You asked.
Well, thank you for joining us, um, I'm gonna put you back on mute then. So we can kinda control the audio, or try to. And let's see, I see Lisa Walters, does she have any comment?
She needs to come over when we talk about the Ring the Peak.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's everyone on this list here, I gotta run down it, make sure I'm not muting somebody, okay, well no more public comment, we'll close that. And go to the presentations, um, first we get to welcome our city clerk. And uh, to do her presentation, and let's make sure that... She is up and running, okay? She is, well good evening and welcome.
Hi Dave, um, and hello everyone on OSAC, I'm uh, Kristen Ducoy, your deputy city clerk. Um, so just a second here and I'll get presentation shared. And can you guys hear me okay as well?
Mm-hmm.
I'm good, thank you. Thanks for asking.
Yeah. Um, let's see. Alright, and then just to check the display, um, you guys can see the full screen of the presentation and there's not anything obstructing it?
Right.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Alright, so we're kicking off your board training with Colorado Sunshine Law. And this law informs the methods by which public meetings are conducted. Um, main purpose is for public transparency. And we're gonna be focusing in specifically on open meetings law, which falls under sections 401 to 402 of Sunshine Law. It generally says all meetings of three or more members of any local public body where any public business is discussed must be open to the public. And there's two criteria that I'd like to highlight here, um, one that it is three or more members. And also that public business is being discussed. And then a local public body, of course, OSAC being a committee is a local public body. And then more generally, it does say any public or private entity. That has been delegated, any governmental decision-making function is also considered a local public body. And then as we go along here, I'm gonna be looking for a little bit of participation, however you guys can do that and are comfortable doing that. Um, so I might ask you some questions, you can give me thumbs up, um, you can raise your hand, chime in if you want, um. So we're gonna talk about what a meeting is, do you guys think that a meeting could happen on social media, like Facebook?
No.
Yes.
It can, it can happen on Facebook, um, do you think it could happen over the phone?
Yes.
Yes. Do you think it could happen through email?
Sure.
Absolutely it can, so state statute broadly defines a meeting as any kind of gathering convened to discuss public business. In person, by telephone, electronically, or by other means of communication. So it's a pretty, pretty broad definition there. And then we're gonna go over four types of meetings, um, which we'll dive in a little deeper into open meetings. When meetings require notice, when minutes are required, and executive sessions. Um, there, it can be that you might see a meeting that all four of these types apply, but in most cases you're gonna see those first three. So we have some fill-in-the-blanks here, um, and it says that meetings with how many members, does anybody remember that first criteria?
Three.
Three, correct, three or more members of any local public body, or a quorum whichever is less. So I'd like to break that down a little bit more, does anybody wanna try to um, see if they could define what a quorum is? Any guesses?
Usually the majority? Do you thought it was, uh, I think, a, a number necessary to approve? A motion or a, take action, is that right?
Yeah, you're on the right track there, um, it's majority, it's also, um, I'll say the valid, the minimum number of members needed to make the meeting valid, so just like you said. Um, and the reason I bring that up is because hypothetically, this is just kinda fun fact, hopefully you guys never have to run into this. But hypothetically, if you only had three members on your board, what would your quorum be?
Two.
Correct, so if you, if two is less than that three or more rule, then open meetings would apply with two members discussing business in that scenario. But again, hopefully you guys never run into that. And then it goes on to say at which, what is discussed?
Public business.
Perfect. Alright, and then, or at which any formal action is to be taken, of course. And then when meetings require minute, a minimum of how much time do you guys have to post your agendas in advance to the meeting?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours, that's right, twenty-four hours public notice with as much specific information as possible. As is required, in summary, that first bullet point says where formal action occurs. And then uh, the second bullet point says at which a majority is in attendance or expected to be in attendance. So your meetings are intentional and we wanna make sure we notice those into public in a reasonable time. And then meetings require minutes when formal action occurs or could occur. So if you have anything on your agenda that indicates that you might take action, then you would wanna plan on taking minutes for that meeting. And then we'll talk a bit about executive sessions here, an executive session is a closed portion of a regular or special meeting. Helped to discuss a limited number of matters. Um, no formal action can happen during an executive session. And prior to the session, the specific provision authorizing the executive session. As well as the topic to be discussed must be announced to the public. Um, so with that, I'd like to highlight that it's a formal process and that you, if you have, you think, a potential executive session. That you refer to your staff liaisons for support, um, because for example, there was a municipality a few years ago in um, Colorado. They did not enter executive session properly and follow that process. Um, the matter got brought up in court and the judge deemed that because they didn't enter properly, it wasn't a true executive session, it was still... Public meeting, so they had to release that recording, so very important that we follow process for these. And then some topics for executive session here, could be property transactions, attorney conferences, negotiations. Um, personnel matters, confidential matters under state or federal law. One example for that might be HIPAA, I don't know if you, if you guys probably won't run into that, but just for your information. And documents protected under QARA as well. And then we have some best practices here, um, in summary, we recommend being transparent. Even if you are discussing with another member and it's not triggering open meetings law. Um, it still would be in the spirit of the law to keep as much of that discussion as possible in a public meeting, um. And then it's also just good process for you not to have to repeat yourself. Uh, and then in that second bullet point, essentially if you are communicating something about public business. Um, keep in mind that there is the possibility that that might get to somebody else's ears. With that, a quick note about QARA, just um, in that same spirit of transparency. In a way, um, emails concerning public duties or funds are requestable under QARA. And then we have some emailing best practices, we, you've, you've seen this, um, your staff liaisons do this when they send out your agenda and packet. They blank carbon copy the board and um, they put, well, I don't remember which one they used. I think they might do the one-way email or do not reply, and they put it in bold and red. Um, that's, both of these are methods to prevent that back and forth discussion, because we don't wanna be triggering open meetings during emails. Um, does anybody uh, know what a daisy chain is?
Sorry, what a what is?
A daisy chain?
Daisy chain.
Yeah, cuz it can happen on email, um, anybody know what that one is?
I think it's where one person tells another, and forwards it, and forwards it. So there's actually enough people getting it, but it seems like it's just one at a time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, um, so daisy chains do trigger open meetings law, just like you said, it's that indirect com- um, communication from A to B to C. Um, so that's something that we wanna avoid, cuz that would also trigger open meetings is not transparent, right? And then emails not included in open meetings law are emails that do not relate to the merits or substance of pending legislations or other public business. Emails about scheduling and availability, and emails for the purpose of forwarding information. Now this last bullet point, um, I do wanna highlight that that is information that I would expect to be like research or a packet material. That you're forwarding most likely to your chair, or a staff liaison depending on what your processes are. Alright, and then, um, I have a fun little quiz that I'm gonna pull up here, has anybody used Mentee Meter before?
Nope.
No? Okay, so if you don't mind pulling out your phones. Um, nope, did I just, okay. You can go to mentee.com. M-E-N-T-I dot com. And then you'll put in the code here, um, that's gonna be 11064169. And I have some scenarios to go over in regards to open meetings law, got one person in there, two.
What's the code and where do you put it?
Yeah, um, are you, so go to mentee.com, M-E-N-T-I, and then it should pop up a box for you and put the code. And the code should be at the top of the screen here.
Nope. Where do you put the code? I'm not following you.
Um, if, do you have on your phone, um, were you able to go to the website?
Dot com.
Yeah, mentee.com, is there a box in the middle of the screen?
Nope.
No? Um...
Have you brought up the page? Is the page uh, displayed there for you, Judy?
Nope, just says subject.
Huh. Menti.com. If you go to, if you want Judy, you could, you could just follow along, um, if you wanna answer, you can. Um, the answer's through the quit, online quizzes. Um, the answers through the quit, online quizzes are, they're anonymous, but, um, it's really just for fun. Um. It says for this one, Jane is having a party for the holidays and she has invited everyone on her board. Does her event fall under open meetings law? And I've got four answers. I've got six people, it looks like, that are logged in. Got one unsure. Okay. So the answer on this one is no. Technically, no, it doesn't fall under open meetings law because it is not for the purpose of discussing public business. Now, you've probably seen in the past when the city has, um, put out a notice for an event like this um, of a possible quorum and attendance. And, um, certainly doesn't hurt to do that. That's a good precaution. Uh, but because the event is not to discuss public business and we shouldn't be discussing public business at these events, it's not under open meetings law. All right, next question for you guys. Says Thomas discussing public business with an alternate member on his board. When another member approaches, will the discussion trigger open meetings law?
Yes.
She says yes. Do that one yes? One unsure. All right. The answer is yes. Um, your alternate members can be promoted to a voting position anytime and, uh, they're still part of your board, right? Okay, we have multiple scenarios on this one and you can check all that apply. Uh, first scenario is two board members discussing public business while out at lunch. Two board members discussing public business via emails that include the entire board. Three board members discussing public funds at the office. Four board members discussing scheduling. All right, let's see the answer here. It is the middle two. So, um, discussing two board members having a discussion with all members on the email chain would still apply. Um, of course, the three members is pretty straightforward. The scheduling one doesn't apply cuz remember communications about scheduling are not under open meetings law. And then that first one, um, we know is not applicable to your board cuz you're under that three or more rule. All right. And then, um, I would love some feedback if you guys wanna let us know, um, what you learned today or, um, if you, any feedback that you have about the presentation, um, we would appreciate it. And then I'll move on to questions and I'll have the core presentation next.
Got a question about subcommittees. Uh, I thought on your materials, there was some, excuse me, some reference to it. Because we may have the, uh, may have the need to create some subcommittees to develop a proposal or make some recommendations to the larger committee. The, the subcommittees would never have authorization to adopt something, even though there would maybe be three members on it. Uh, and I'm wondering how that triggers or does it trigger open meetings or notice requirements or minute requirements? Basically, they're being given, assigned a task. So let's just come up with an example. Let's just say on this Iron Mountain repair, we did it a bit more formally and assigned three members to go meet with the potential contractors to walk the repair and then make, uh, recommendations back to the committee.
I would say that sunshine law would still apply to that subcommittee because I would consider them to be a local public body still. Um. And.
Yeah, I guess I'm hanging on. They don't have the ability to adopt anything.
Mm-hmm.
It's just, it basically, it's a, it's a smaller work session. I, I, I know you're familiar with them. I mean, but, go ahead.
Oh, hey Denise, you have your hand raised. What's up?
Let's see if we can figure out how to let her talk.
It looks like she's unmuted.
Can you hear me? Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kristen is right. That's still considered an, a public meeting cuz you have three people, even though they can't adopt, they're discussing public business.
Yeah.
So you would have to post it, you'd have to have minutes, and you'd have to do all the things like all the other businesses, all the other meetings.
And if I may add, this is due to subcommittee members are typically made up of members. So if you, so everything that applies to members applies to subcommittees.
Right. Thank you guys for your feedback on here. Um.
Kristen, may I make a comment? This is Judith.
Yeah, absolutely.
You didn't specifically, um, address texting and so, um, I was just wondering for a few, I, this is the first time I've seen your presentation and thank you for that. Um, but that tech, you know, we can, um, when you text someone, you have an ability to do a group text. So I think it would be important to include texting along with emailing because people don't understand that texting can also be a meeting.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. Thank you, Ju- Judith. Um. That's a good point. I do have it included in the core presentation, but for sunshine law, I appreciate the highlight on that. All right, um, does anybody have any other questions about sunshine law? No? Okay. Let's see here. All right, we will jump to open records. Let's see. So Colorado Open Records Act Cora, uh, falls under excuse me, Title twenty-four, Section seventy-two, uh, starting with two oh one. And it says all public records shall be opened for inspection by any person at reasonable times. And then we have a message here, which you've probably all seen before from staff likely. Um, under Cora, all messages sent to or from this email account may be subject to public disclosure. So again, that's just highlighting that our emails are part of public record. And then the definition of public record says, I'm gonna highlight the important parts here. All writings made, maintained, or kept by any local government financed entity for use in the exercise of functions required or authorized by law or administrative rule or involving the receipt or expenditure of public funds. And that does include correspondence of elected officials and appointed members. Does anybody have any questions about that definition? No. All right. And then there's some correspondence that's not included. Generally, work product is not included. Um, that's gonna consist of deliberative materials that are as some, assembled for or by elected officials. That's gonna be notes, memos, um, preliminary drafts. And then correspondence that is not for use in performance of public functions or for public funds. And then the last one is about correspondence that is clearly of a personal nature. And we have some examples of records that are not public, um, but more so I'd like to highlight what gets redacted um, when responding to those requests, which is personal identifiable information, gonna be, um, your personal phone numbers, credit card numbers, um, personal home address and the like. And then correspondence not related to public business or public funds. Can anybody tell me who the custodian of records is?
For the city?
Yes.
Yeah, your office.
Yes, the city clerk is the custodian of records. And then as deputy city clerk, I do act on behalf of the city clerk and, um, as needed. And then we have a snippet from statute here, um, which generally says that the city clerk can make rules for the protection of records and prevention of interference with regular duties of the clerk's office. And just to give you guys a general overview of our processes in our office, um, the purpose of our record, or sorry, our, um, public records policy is to assure prompt and equitable, equitable service. And the policy is to make all records available for public inspection unless otherwise, sorry, unless such records are protected from, I have something in my way here. Sorry, I can't see. Um. Are protected from disclosure by state or federal law, by court order, or unless disclosure of such records would be contrary to the public interests. Um, that full policy is available on the city clerk's webpage and it does not include criminal justice records that are maintained by the, uh, Manitou Springs Police Department. However, they do use the same form that we use. Uh, this is on our website as well, or you could get it in person. Uh, request must be submitted in writing with enough specificity. And then, um, a few points when we respond, we do respond within three business days. Uh, we have an hourly research and retrieval fee of forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents per hour, but that first hour is free. And then if the request is denied, a reason will be provided to the requister in writing. And then just to wrap it back around to how this relates to the, the committee, uh, your emails and text message correspondence relating to public functions of your appointed position are requestable under Cora. So we recommend that you keep transparency in mind in your communications. And that's the end of core presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Is the, I do.
Yes.
Is the city currently keeping that time?
Uh, but can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. Is the city currently keeping the time limit of three days?
Yes.
Three business days, excuse me.
Yes. Yeah, that's, um, statute that we respond within three business days. Um, the way that they count it is a little bit of a learning curve cuz when you receive it, it's like a day zero, cuz it's a full three business days. Um. With that said, there are times where we might respond within those first three business days and say that we need to extend it more ti- for more time, which statute allows us to do because it's a more depth request or something like that. Anybody else? Oh, Marian, you have your hand raised.
Hi, is it okay if I talk?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious, is there any auditing of this, uh, of public records or requests that goes on?
Not that I'm aware of. No, I haven't, I haven't encountered that myself.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, then. Well, I appreciate you guys letting me join your meeting. Denise, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say there's not really an audit except for the state. They would audit us if they ever got a complaint. And say, you know, if somebody reached out to the state and said they're not giving us this record by this time or they're doing that, then the state would come in and do the audit.
Thanks, Denise. I'm learning too.
Kristen, I understand you have a, uh, not tonight, but a, uh, second, uh, phase of this, uh, presentation. Is that correct?
So I have another, um, round of training that I am uh, slowly reaching out to chairs, um, to get on future agendas uh, for effective meetings, which is revolving around rules of order. That one, I'm actually gonna be looking for a lot more participation. So, um, I will be following it with an email in the near future here, if that works for you. Um. So that, that is an, the second and final round of training that we've developed.
Okay, all right. Thanks for, uh, joining us this evening. Any more questions for Kristen? Judy?
No, I have one for you afterwards.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
Yeah, Judy, what do you have?
Um, I think we, I think we were supposed to, I Andrea, Judith, help, but weren't we supposed to talk to both candidates for the positions at, on A?
I'm happy to do that. Yeah, I asked. Uh, I don't know what the protocol is. Um. So if you wanna flip to that real quickly, we could. Andrea, you have any recollection on that?
I mean, I think if they wanna just like introduce themselves and then, um, you know, if anybody has any questions and then um, I'm not hundred percent on this, but you know, I think let them kinda re- just reflect on whether, you know, how the meeting went and then we could vote on it next, uh, meeting.
Okay. Was there any objection, um, kinda, um, moving back quickly to that portion of the agenda, we could handle that rather quickly. We do have a real full agenda, so we, we gotta be pretty brisk here. Any objection? Okay, let's not. Well then, um, let's see, who's open there? Uh, Marian, looks like you're unmuted. Could you just give a little introduction of who you are and your interest, uh, in, uh, being on the committee and also your role, your involvement in Manitou?
Sure. My name is Marian Saruzzi. I've lived in Manitou for, uh, six years. I've been involved, um, in the Manitou Garden Club. I'm a master gardener. I'm very interested in horticulture and, uh, making sure that, uh, open spaces are preserved and they don't have any noxious weeds, uh, weed or invasive species. And, uh, that, um, we offer, uh, everybody who comes to Manitou, uh, clean trails. And, um, if you have any questions, I, oh, I've been involved with, uh, things like, um, the coffin race or the, uh, flinging of the fruitcake, the fruitcake toss, that sort of thing, yeah. Uh, wrapping, wrapping fruitcakes at, uh, twenty degrees is, is not recommended. So, um, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Let's see, the other thing I was remembering is, uh, you had been involved in the, uh, the garden there at Mansions Park behind City Hall.
Yeah, that's correct. I was the coordinator, which means, uh, get people involved in gardening there, making sure they keep down the weeds, they properly water, they, uh, they get their mulch, they, um, uh, just take care of the garden and, uh, enjoy the compliments that various passersby would make.
And let's see, Marion, uh, remind me where, where do you live? What part of town? About an address so much, just what part of town?
I live on Crystal Park Road, uh, right near, uh, Savelli's.
Yeah, okay, there at the beginning. Okay, thank you. Yeah, any questions for Marion? All right, thanks, Marion. Cassandra, how about you? Give us a few minutes here.
Okay, uh, so my name is Cassandra Bristnahan. I have been in Manitou about twenty years. Um, I have most recently been involved, uh, with the schools um, as a cross-country coach. So started sort of in the middle school and then moved up to the high school. So the trails, um, are a big part of that and a big part of why our running teams have become quite popular and uh, quite good, actually. Um, people wanna run in Manitou. Um, so that's number one. Number two, I did put on the five K race last year, the Manitou five K as a fundraiser for the schools and also to elevate the um, parks and the creek walk. Um, my main interest in getting involved in this, um, this advisory board is, um, really to, um, be ready for acquisitions. I think acquiring open space has been the reason my husband and I have stayed here so long. We sort of um, got here for part of our education and then stayed because every few years just seems like our trails get better and better and we link things and there's more opportunities and it's just been a really exciting place to live. Um, so I think it's part, part of it is acquisition, part of it is protecting, part of it is linking trails, part of it is improving trails. Um, it's really the, the, what makes the quality of life good here.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Cassandra? All right, well, thank you both, uh, for joining us this evening. Um.
And I have, I have a question, Dave.
Yeah, Judy.
Um, not to either gal, but um, this is, this meeting we're gonna have tonight is a huge one. And I, I think it would be nice to say, I'm just saying this, I don't know if anybody will agree with me on the, on the committee, that you, you gals don't have to feel obligated to sit through this enormous agenda, cuz it is enormous. And I'm not, I'm not sa- I'm asking, Dave. I'm asking if that's okay.
Yeah.
Cuz I, I think, yeah.
It could be a long meeting. We're gonna try to be brisk here, but it could be. Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you for thinking of us.
Thank you. Yes.
All right. Well, let's, let's pick back up with item, um, we're gonna do reports. I don't know if we have Jillian or not.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
We do, we can.
So I'm, I'm talking into my phone, but I'm, my video is on. So I, I figured out how to make audio work. I don't know why my microphone's not working on my computer, but I just, I'm gonna share my screen really quickly.
Well, thanks for being a technical wizard, making it happen.
I do my best. So most of my items are covered later, later on in the agenda, but I did want to share a couple of thank yous. So um, hopefully you're seeing this photo of our beautiful new split rail fence along the edge of Zero Becker's Lane. This project was funded by OSAC, so thank you. Um, I have a picture of the old fence here circled below. It's that ugly chain link that was up before the property was acquired, and our team removed all the chain link and the posts and uh, replaced it with that nice park open space split rail. So thank you, OSAC, for funding this project.
Well, you did it quickly, too.
Yeah, definitely. We, we wanted to get that old fence out of there. And then this is the old uh, trailhead sign at the Paul Intiman Memorial Nature Trail, right across Crystal Park Road from the access to the Intiman Trail going west. And Dave noticed that it was kind of looking in disrepair, so he brought it home and completely refurbished it with a fresh coat of paint, and our team reinstalled it at the trailhead and kind of trimmed up the vegetation around the area. So wanted to thank Dave for literally taking this sign home and um, giving it a facelift. So thanks Dave for doing that, much appreciated.
Yeah, it's when Paul, it's when Paul and I were with Jillian uh, for the Iron Mountain Walk, and uh, it turned out the sign, uh, the sign posts were just about to give it up. Um, Josh Farmer and I just put our hands under the sign and just lifted it up. We didn't have to, didn't have to stress our backs or our legs, it just, it just came, came right out of the ground, so it was time.
It was definitely time. I'm glad no one else walked away with it before then. But it's secure now, so you won't be able to do that anymore, Dave.
Yeah, it's in the ground, thank you.
Yep, uh, that's all I have. The rest of my items are covered later in the agenda, so thanks everyone.
Okay. Any questions for Jillian on those items, those two quick items? Not hearing any.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, alright, well, let's go to uh, Denise. Um, this is an update on uh, Ring the Peak uh, in the packet. This is uh, at pages fifty-two. Um, Denise may um, direct us to some maps. Uh, they are toward the back of that section, pages fifty-two to one thirty-six. Denise, welcome.
Thank you, and can you bring Lisa over?
Uh, yeah, I can do that. Alright. I think she's currently muted, but I think that's on her end. And it looks like Robin, Robin Kovats had joined us maybe earlier, I just didn't see it.
I was having computer issues myself, so I uh, came in just as the sunshine law started.
Okay, thank you. Denise, I think, to you, yeah.
And Lisa's here. Um, I just wanted to give you an update on Ring the Peak, because I mentioned it during the strategic planning meeting. So I provided as much information as we could provide at the time, and Lisa is with Carole Springs Utilities, who's also helping with this project. And so I asked her to sit in, so if you ask questions or wanted information I did not have, she can provide that. But I think I've given you the majority of the information that's been um, discussed at this point. It was all included in your packet. There is, we are, there is a group that's working at, working on this project. It's all the entities. Teller County, CSU, Carole Springs Utilities, uh, City of Carole Springs, Lisa Helpmes, uh, Colorado Wildlife.
Parks and Wildlife.
Parks and Wildlife. Yep, and then um, the peak is uh, the gentleman who runs the, the highway is also part of it. I think that's pretty much all of them.
And the Forest Service.
And the Forest Service. So we agreed last year that we would get together and start working this. As all of you know, and or probably know, is the trail is already out there on every trail map there is of saying here is Ring the Peak, but it hasn't been officially adopted as Ring the Peak Trail. So this, the next year, they'll be working with um, a consultant to really work together to try to come up with a good scope of work and an agreement of how to move forward. And then they'll be trying to apply from, for some GOCO grants and some other grants to complete the entire trail. One of the things that is always my concern is, of course, enforcement along the trail, and then also um, maintenance of the trail. And if it's part of our trail, are they gonna help with maintenance? Is there gonna be money for maintenance? Those type of things, and what would the enforcement be? So that's a very high-level overview. Uh, Lisa, anything you would like to add?
No, I just enjoyed um, working with Denise in these meetings. Um, we definitely have identified our core values that we want to protect. Water supply is definitely a part of that, and bringing up the other issues in addition to like wildfire mitigation, the maintenance, and the enforcement components.
And the sustainability to ensure we protect the environment through this. Thanks Lisa. So with that, um, I guess we would just open it up for questions. There's, you know, it's just in the beginning stage, and this has been, I guess, discussed for what, thirty years? And Dave, you may know that, because I know you've been, um, been involved with this pretty um, closely over the, the years. But it's been definitely discussed and uh, now it looks like it might be coming to reality in time.
Yeah, I think it's all about momentum, getting momentum building and then running with it. So I appreciate it, appreciate the effort. Interesting to see, is um, you know, a lot of it, though, the southwest segment is um, is the details on the alignment, and you can really get deep in the weeds uh, going through the, the uh, the plan, and uh, you can see what the challenges are in that. But if people choose to throw their energy at it, it can, it can be done. Um, but the other part is the management part, uh, because it goes through so many jurisdictions, federal, um, private and uh, public. So it's, it's gonna take a coordinated effort, but very nice to see some movement on it, I think. Any questions for Denise uh, or Lisa on this? Yeah, Andrea, unmute there if you would.
Yeah, um, so uh, I'm wondering um, if as there's like stakeholder kinds of meetings involved, um, are there people from the, our city that are attending those? Or is that you Denise?
Right now, it's just me, yes.
So in the future, like if that needs to broaden or change, you know, like
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good to keep on top of that.
Actually Denise, I would mind asking, what kind of rekindled the energy on this thing? Uh, can you identify anything in particular, or was it just a, a couple of folks talking one day and realizing we gotta get back to this? What, what caused it to rekindle? Because it's been pretty dead for, since the uh, master plan came out.
Lisa, you may want to add, this is one of um, the governor's high priorities. He would like to see this completed. Uh, and he's put some energy towards it at this point, so that is. And also because it's out there on every trail, on every um, trail map, and people are using it and using it um, illegally, so to speak. And so it's time to figure out what we can do to manage it and to put some funding towards it.
Yeah, I, I would agree um, with, with Denise, and it's definitely been out there for a while. Um, one of the struggles that uh, Colorado Springs and the utilities has struggled with was the alignments on our North Slope Recreation Area. Um, we've been going through a revitalization of that recreation area. Our plan was from nineteen ninety-two. Um, and portions of Ring the Peak does intersect that property, but it's on areas that uh, we've never gone through a formal authorization for Ring the Peak specifically, and it's on service roads where it is not actually on a designated trail. So our efforts, um, it coupled with this Ring the Peak efforts uh, is, is definitely putting some energy towards the North Slope Recreation Area, um, and, and working through this. And of course, we're not the only ones impacted. Uh, we definitely have the Forest Service, our friends over in Manitou Springs with the Incline and New Pass Trail, El Paso County, Teller. All of these signing partners um, are, are definitely impacted by this. So um, we're just encouraged that we are taking the momentum, um, and that CPW is allocating resources to help with not only facilitation for, you know, the next year uh, for the first phase, and, and in the following years um, for the longer phase, to really help us identify um, how we can make this a, 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 a project, a corridor project that can last uh, longer and, and finish this trail system.
And I think with CSU also, Teller County is experience, experiencing lots of um, issues up there, I would say, or concerns of people going on private property, those type of things. And so they're really reaching out and saying, we've got to figure out how to move this forward in a positive way.
Any questions for Denise or Lisa? Yeah Judy, go ahead.
I, I have a question about jurisdictions, because when I looked at all this, it was incredibly complicated. And so the questions I have are about, how do you uh, not talking about YouTube, but how does one uh, allocate resources or want communities to commit to resources? Is it, well, you know, the property line to Manitou Springs ends here, so Manitou Springs obligations are not any farther beyond that? How does that all work? Or, and the same thing with um, with the in, um, enforcement? You know, where, where, how do you propose to do this? Is, is if, if it's on Forest Service property, if part of the trail, do they, are they responsible for their enforcement? Who's responsible in each one of these jurisdictions where the trail goes through for um, fire mitigation? Or for fire protection for that? Is it all one? Does that all have to be worked out as you go?
You, you know, Judith, you really hit, hit the nail right up there on the head. Um, these are exactly the conversations we're having with the different partners. Um, where uh, I think some of our strengths are, is figuring out who can be that uh, avenue or that, that agency that can work across different jurisdictions. Um, we all are very familiar with our county uh, enforcement. Um, the abilities that they have, the deputies in the sheriff's office to work on, not only on uh, city-owned property to do enforcement, um, but also they also, they have agreements for Forest Service, and I'm sure that they have the same thing with Manitou as well. Um, and, and, but you know, can CPW also provide this um, level of enforcement? And we're definitely exploring that, really trying to get into the nuances uh, of this and um, what this could look like around the Ring the Peak corridor as a whole. Um, so yeah, you definitely hit on some, some really good discussions that we have coming forth.
And I think the plan is, the hope is that we have one group that does the enforcements throughout the entire trail area. Um, and I've talked about that quite a bit in our meetings, is that we have to have someone that does the enforcing. And I think Colorado Wildlife is trying to get that authority to do that over time, and the funding to do it from the state, because that's the biggest thing right now, is funding for everybody. Um, and what does that look like, along with the maintenance? Because we don't have the funding to maintain that trail all the time. And so that was the other concern that I've brought up numerous times is if we do this, we have to be able to enforce, and we have to be able to make sure that it ma- it is maintained.
So this would be, I'm just taking one, the one example I'm familiar with, this would be like um, are the city police of, of Manitou taking whatever required it was to get certified, I guess would be the word, as, or deputized actually, as uh, El Paso County deputies, so that when they were out trying to break up homeless camps and whatnot, or fa- follow up on a complaint, they could do it ac- even if those folks left, that they were pursuing left uh, Manitou's property. Anything?
And that's already the case. We, all of our police officers are deputized in the county.
Right, so it would be that kind of thing, when you say one group, would be that group that would be, everybody would accept them as all, all cross, um, cross-deputized, I guess would be the word. Okay, right.
Anybody else? Well, thank you. Thank you Lisa for joining us.
Yeah, thank you, it's a pleasure, and I, I liked hearing uh, the, the first part of the meeting, it's quite interesting, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks Lisa, I really appreciate it.
Denise, you need to stay around. We've got you up next on um, Creek Walk Four. Um, we're on page uh, one thirty-two, uh, I think, of the uh, packet, and um, and Denise is gonna walk us through that. Uh, there was a little present, a little discussion of this at our uh, budget meeting on uh, July twenty-three. And um, Jillian and I followed up with Denise on a couple of matters, and we agreed, let's put this back in front of the committee and, and just be a bit formal about it, and so Denise is gonna uh, present that to us. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, very simple. This is to finish Creek Walk Four, which is from the Chamber up to um, the Chase Bank or the Duck Stop. And it's to do the uh, the, both the sidewalk area, and then that nature trail will continue, will keep that and do a um, a little stairway, stairwell, or stairway up the, to the sidewalk, how it is now. So this is just to complete that. We, of course, needed the match funding for the CDOT funds to be able to do it, and then we were able to get an additional two hundred and fifty thousand from the, from CDOT, or was the downtown revitalization uh, grant. And this is what used to be six hundred thousand, anymore is probably eight hundred to nine hundred thousand in two years, as we continue to move forward. I believe it was a hundred and thirty-eight, I can't pull it up right now, Dave, because that um, we were, that OSAC had for Creek Walk. And so we're just wanting to see if we could go ahead and utilize those funds to complete this project.
Does any of, do any of the more senior members recall when this was approved? Um, it was on the budget last year as a carry-forward number from twenty twenty-four. Uh, so in the summer of twenty twenty-three, this number must have appeared, and it may have appeared even sooner than that. I just, I have no historical knowledge, because I wasn't here. Now Andrea, Judy, do you guys have any recollection of how we ended up putting a hundred and thirty-eight thousand aside? Come, anything come to mind on that?
Um, I have it in my notes that that was one of our goals that we set up for twenty twenty-four. That happened at the end of twenty twenty-three, um, but I'm not sure if that would. So it's, it's been around for at least two or three years now.
And this project was to be started in twenty, be completed in twenty twenty-four. It took over a year for us to get the historical easements from CDOT. So um, we would have started before now, which would have saved us some money. But because CDOT takes along with those historical easements and other things, that's why it's starting at this point.
Denise, why do you use that phrase, historic easements?
That's what it's called by CDOT. There's historical easements that we have to get, and those take a little bit longer. I can't tell you exactly what that means compared to a different easement, but the historic easements take a little bit longer.
The other part of the, um, I'll, I'll say, the support for doing this is Creek Walk Six is so technical. Um, it has an unknown construction budget and a uh, really unknown schedule for construction. It's at least out into twenty twenty-six. Uh, Denise, correct me on that, it might be longer. And so the, the, the point is, we've, we've allocated these funds, um, and there's a need to use them now. Because of the Because of the sales tax, OSAC continues to receive additional funding each year. This is about one year's sales tax revenue. But this is what the money is for. I mean, the citizens are asking us to work on trails and open space. And this is a part of one of the master trails of the community. So tho- those are the arguments for it. Denise, thanks for the the visuals. This was real helpful to me. Because I just didn't have background on Creek Walk Four. About any more questions or discussion? Go ahead, Denise, please.
Regarding Serpentine, hopefully we get the designs completed in twenty twenty-six and start construction in twenty twenty-seven. That is the goal, but the design and all the easements do take longer than anticipated sometimes. So the goal is to start construction for Serpentine in twenty twenty-seven.
On the stairwell that goes down to the the nature trail along this segment, do you do you know where that is to be? I can't tell from the schematic on page one forty-one of where that's supposed to be in relation, say, to the the bridge, the safe route, concrete couch bridge. I just don't know where.
My understanding and I is it's right where you go up now. So where you go up the trail now, if you walk on that trail and you go up that little area and if it's muddy and you have shoes on, plan on falling down if you're going down, that there'll be a stairwell there.
Okay, this would be further upstream than the bridge then. Okay. I think, I mean, right.
It is past the bridge going west. We're not saying going east or west, so it's hard to figure it out. But if you're talking about going west, it's definitely past the bridge by the by the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, it's up by, not very far from the Duck Stop area.
By the way, I've got to ask, what why is it called the Duck?
We just came up with the name instead of calling it the Chase Bank and we had the ducks. We put the ducks up there because that's kind of becoming a new thing. So it was a name that we started because I'm tired of calling it the Chase Bank. Because it's no longer the Chase Bank. It's it's done.
Yeah, I mean, I biked by it yesterday. I was just thinking, it's got to be a sign somewhere that says Duck. Where is it?
Do you see all the ducks up on there?
Thank you. Any questions for Denise? Are there any concerns about this? What's what's the consensus of the committee? My suggestion is that we approve it for the reasons that are in the presentation and also the funds are needed now and we need to take advantage of the funding that is in place that will expire if we're not able to take advantage of it. So it's kind of a use it, lose it argument. But that those are all my thoughts. What we need to hear from some other committee members.
Yeah, this is bird in the hand. I mean, I think the point was we wanted to fund the next section. This is the next section, even though it jumped ahead of the other one. So I I think we move forward. It's what we're here for.
Yeah, that's a real succinct argument. It's to fund a segment. We've got one ready. Let's do it. Okay. Thanks, Paul. Anybody else?
This is Robin. I agree.
Thanks. Okay.
To approve a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four Creek Walk Four.
I second.
All right, yeah, I missed the first part. That's a motion by Andrea and a second by Paul. Any more discussion on the proposal to approve the funding for this segment anymore? Anybody else? Don't see any? All in favor of the motion to approve? If they'd raised their hands, say aye. See everybody. Okay. Denise, thank you for the presentation. Again, really crisp. And I really appreciate the visuals. They helped me tremendously, particularly the map. Thank you.
Well, Jillian put all that together, so. And thank you to the committee and thanks for your time. And if it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and log off at that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and thanks for what you do. Much appreciated.
Hey, I'm trying to get back to my agenda, but I got so many open windows, I can't find it. So hang on. Are we going to Bysel next? I'm sorry?
What what is all that? The Bysel property?
Is Bysel next on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Okay, if you can go to page one forty-three of your PDF. I can explain what this is. In the post-plan, there are a couple of open space. I call them targets. They include the West End parcels, so-called Jenkins parcels on the west end of town. They include the Bysel parcels that are shown here, and I'll explain what this is here in a minute. And there are a few other smaller target areas. The the Bysel parcels are owned by Steve Bysel and his wife Wendy. They live in Cascade. And also owned by his parents who died last year, Harold and Wilma. To orient you, if you're looking at page one forty-three on the packet. It might be better to I won't do screen here. But there are three parcels. There's a forty-acre parcel. There's a twenty-acre parcel right above the cemetery. Next to it is a six-point something acre parcel. The middle parcel is the twenty acre. That is owned by the estate of Harold and Wilma. And Steve, on behalf of his family, does need to address that parcel. So there's an opening for the city to perhaps do a transaction on some all part of the Bysel parcels. I had reached out to Steve in, I think, April because I had met him on some other occasions and asked if if we could have a conversation about that. And he said yes. So we exchanged an email about everything from a conservation easement to trail corridors to an acquisition. And he was interested in continuing the discussion. I briefed Denise, Hal and Jillian in, I think it was in May. In June, I was out of town some and took a while to schedule this. But Mayor John Graham and I met Steve Bysel on the property on July thirty, July thirty-one, and we walked the parcels. And it was just a very good meet and greet. That was the purpose. And just to put some faces with names. That was a very productive discussion. And again, Steve has given permission for us to continue our discussion. This is all at a very preliminary phase. And Denise suggested the next step should be the city obtaining an appraisal. Or at least a, there's a step down from an appraisal. It's called an opinion of value or a value opinion. It's not an appraisal. It doesn't meet the same standards. But the city has an appraisal firm on call, on contract. And we would engage them to provide an opinion value. To at least provide us with a starting, starting number, a starting figure. What is this property worth? So that we can begin to have a discussion. Again, this is all very preliminary, just the initial stages. Let me try to share a screen here and show you. Let's see if I can do this. I may not be able to. Hang on. Need to share my screen. Here we go. This is a Google Earth presentation that a friend of mine did at my request. She has a GIS background. And I've worked with her before, so I asked her to do this. So it's an aerial view of the Bysel parcels and I'll stop and orient you a couple of places here. You see three parcels coming into view. This is the forty acre, twenty, and the six point two. So it adds up to a hundred and sixty-seven. It's what it is. Not a hundred, excuse me, just sixty-seven. Get my math right. You're seeing Crystal Park Road here. You're seeing the Public Works facility here. This is the cemetery, the high school, the junior high. This is Iron Mountain, and this is Sheep Mountain. Manitou owns most of this, most of this. So we'll keep zooming in. That's the forty. Forty is kind of interesting. You can see it really encroaches. This is Manitou Mesa. This is what Ken Cavell developed in the nineties above Crystal Park Road, or about seven lots, I think it's seven. Might be wrong on that. It's very interesting how this forty acres. I say encroaches, that's the wrong word. It's just it really moves into that corner there. This is the edge of the city's facility property. So this kind of looks up the throat of the valley. This is the Iron Mountain Trail, moving around Sheep Mountain. Moving back to the the very back or the top of the valley. This is where we did the trail work last year with Trail Works. This is the Iron Mountain Summit. This is the road coming down. Iron Mountain Trail then moves this way to the west. There's a high point here, just on the Bysel twenty acre. There is a trail, an old road that runs down here. That's private, I mean, this part is Manitou. But it drops you into the twenty acre parcel. Again, this is the cemetery. And this is Public Works. The junior high building, this is, I don't know what this is called. If one of you knows, please let me know. I call it the sandlot behind the junior high. This line, if you're wondering, where is this line out there on the ground? This is, this line is almost exactly where the Kara Springs High, uh, high voltage transmission line is. It runs right there on that east-west orientation. So again, this is the twenty acre. This is the seven. It really is the backdrop for the junior high. This is where the rock formations are. Again, the cemetery. This is Enniman Trail here. Moving around, goes around the high school and moves, almost touches the Bysel parcel behind the junior high sandlot, and then it moves out again. So then coming around bit more. That's just a straight-on view of the twenty acre and the six acre. Again, Iron Mountain Trail is up here. And then not much more, I'll just pull it out. So before I leave that, does anybody have any questions in terms of where this is or or what it adjoins?
I I have a question.
Yeah, Judy, please.
He said he's living in Cascade now, but he used to live here. Does he live on, does he have a house on any of these properties?
No, he doesn't, but thank you for asking. The city and Bysel have a rather fractured history. They sued each other multiple times in the early two thousands. Some of you may remember the the assault, the alleged assault between Mark Snyder and Steve Bysel when Mark was so on the council, he was a mayor. So there's, there's a lot of baggage here. And this needs to be done diplomatically and and with, it has to be done in a real transparent manner, I think. What Steve wanted to do back then is build on this house site on the forty and build on this house site on the six acre. And build on this house site here on the twenty. There are wells here. I think, I think there's a well permit here as well. The city contested those well permits under its watershed protection ordinance, claiming that the the wells could impact the mineral springs in Manitou. There were also questions about drainage. There were also questions about access. The Bysel access is on the road along the cemetery. And there has been some dispute between Bysel and the city over whether he has access to use that. There's also been some dispute over whether the city has access to use, to use the road across the Bysel parcels. The city bought Iron Mountain from Tom McGee. And Tom McGee and Bysel had an agreement that they could use each other's properties for access. So when the city bought McGee's parcel, the city has claimed that it stepped into McGee's shoes and the city now has the right to use these roadways. And that's been contested. So there's a lot of pieces here that may need to be solved. It's all doable. But the starting point is just to have a discussion, to see if we can have a discussion. And it may go nowhere. But it won't happen if we don't try. I'm certainly willing to spend a fair amount of energy on pursuing it. So that's, that's where we are. Let me get rid of this screen here. And go back. If you look again at the parcel maps, you're seeing it in plan view. And it might make a little more sense to you now, the forty acre owned by Bysel, the twenty acre by the estate and the six acre owned by Bysel. So what I'm asking is, what I wanted to report to you on all that progress. After the July thirty walk, walking visit with Steve and Mayor John. Again, spoke with Denise and Jillian, and they suggested we pursue this appraisal concept or at least discuss it with the appraisal consultants. I'd like to do that. But I did not want to get ahead of the committee. So I wanted to make this presentation to you and ask if I could have your support to just continue the discussion, because that's what it would be. It's a discussion right now. So let me have your your questions or your suggestions on how to do it.
Yeah, I just, I think these parcels are very, like, very important for both, you know, open space as well as trail options that these would provide. I think, as you mentioned, there is currently kind of an unofficial trail that cuts through there from the sea. Yeah, just below where we did the the work, the professional work last year, you walk down that valley and man alignment would need some work, but that 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 really allows you to cut that hike into a loop. That's that's much more manageable from a day hike as opposed to, you know, right now, it's really a lot of out and back options. So and then just, you know, those are some pretty key open space areas. The fact they're connected to the the property we've already purchased, I I mean, these are high on my list of of properties to look at.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just bringing up the if you bring, I'm bringing up page one forty-three of the packet. And and this is what the area up here where Paul was referring to, where the the trail comes underneath Sheep Mountain, hits the old Oak Ridge Road. This is where Trail Works did its work. And then this is the the main Iron Mountain Trail. This trail is currently there. It's an old road. Out of respect to Steve, I have not been on on this parcel because it dumps you right down here. Still in Manitou, but then it dumps you into Bysel right here. What John Graham and Steve and I walked, we met, we walked up the road, we walked up to this site. We walked back here and we walked to here. This is where we got caught in the rain. And we walked back and we were drenched by the time we got back to our vehicles, which were right here. But anyway, other other comments or questions, suggestions in particular? I'd like to proceed by by following up with Denise and Jillian on that, but any more comments? TJ, how about you? You've been through this process on acquisitions.
Yeah, no, between that and some previous chairs, interactions with with the Bysel family. I think that pursuing this is a good idea, even if we don't build any trails out there of just reducing the potential for conflict in that area. So I'm just, I'm happy that you're engaging with them and we'll see where it goes.
You know, I'll follow up on that. I mean, even if we're just talking as neighbors, it's productive. Even if it doesn't go anywhere, to avoid that sort of conflict. Yeah, I appreciate that perspective.
This is Robin.
Anybody else?
This is Robin. I have a question. Should we vote to approve getting an appraisal on the property so that if, you know, we can move forward, we have that set to go?
Well, that would be fine. I I would add, I would say an appraisal. Well, that would be fine. I, I would add, I would say an appraisal or a value opinion. Um, I, you know, a formal appraisal has to meet certain requirements under the U.S.P.A., uh, Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice. And, um, we're just not there yet. We really just need some indications of value, uh, to start a discussion. I mean, um, Steve may think this is worth three million and we may think it's worth, uh, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand, um, or four hundred thousand, or who knows? So that's at the very preliminary stage, Robin, it would be an appraisal or a value opinion. Uh, but yeah, a motion would be appropriate.
Can I make an, I, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, do either an opinion of value or an appraisal, whichever one the, the city deems best, uh, and proceed with that. And that OSAC.
All right.
Wait, I want to call for discussion.
Yeah, I will. But can we get a second on that? Andrea is seconding the motion. Thank you. And Judy, you want some more discussion? Let's continue, please.
Yeah, I, having gone through this once with, uh, Steve, I am very reticent to do anything to, uh, I don't know what the word is, to back him off. Maybe that's a good way to put it. And I'm wondering, we're, we're rushing a little bit and we're going to back him off. Um, that's not, that would not be a surprise because it's happened before. Um, and I'm wondering, because you know, you had this preliminary discussion, you said it all went well. We've had that happen before and then things have hit the rocks. And I'm wondering if we rush this and talk about a formal appraisal, if we're getting ourselves, uh, into that wedge again, where it feels like he, he says, you know, the city's just steamrolling over him. Um, and I'd hate to see all your efforts go down the tubes because he decides, you know, he gets cold feet fast. Or he did.
He, he could. I mean, as a property owner, he can say, no, I'm done with this at any time and.
Well, that's why I'm saying maybe talking to him again and saying, well, you know, we had this conversation. We think maybe, and putting this in the lower threshold kind of thing with the appraisal of value, I guess you said.
Yeah.
It's less than a full appraisal, just to give us an idea whether we could even come in the ballpark of what you might be thinking. I mean, I, it's like, he, I think.
Well, that is the way it was presented to him. We, we don't know what we're talking about in terms of dollars.
Yes.
Steve, and we need a, um, we need some, a data point to start any discussion. And, and he said, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, so that, oh, you've had that discussion.
Yeah, I mean, taking it slow and letting him know, we, the city has to have a principled basis, um, to do any negotiations. Uh, just can't pick a number out of the air and, uh, we don't do business that way, um, can't. Um, and that discussion has been had very explicitly with him.
So I, I, I guess what I'm saying is I, I would, in my red, red alert system, I think saying an appraisal is maybe too much. Maybe the value opinion approach. You know, we're just getting in the ballpark, which is just what, we don't know what we're doing. We got to see what the ballpark is. And maybe it is an expenditure, but maybe it's well worth it in terms of not having him jump back in his rabbit hole.
Well, I agree with you. The value opinion is a lower risk for us.
And threat to him, I would, I would think. Cause I guess it sounds so formal, you know? You know, the, yeah, this is the point we're going to be stuck on and whatever. I, I don't know. I guess I'm very cautious is what.
Yeah, well, that's the way to be, I think. A lot of history here. Uh, yeah, there you are, Judith. Thank you.
Just some thoughts, um, when the city's thinking about a, a piece of land typically, um, you start with an opinion of value. And when you get there, then you as a committee come together and say, do we want this property? And if so, what are we going to do with it? And then the second phase is the appraisal, which can be expensive. So, um, if I were to, um, suggest a friendly amendment, it would be to move forward with the appraisal of value, which is what we did with, for example, the, um, car wash portion of the property of the Dillon lot. So just, just some thoughts to consider.
Now that's, that experience is helpful and certainly relevant. Um, yeah, we want to start small, uh, without spending too much time and energy because of Judy's concerns and also to, to bring Steve along, um, and see how far we get with this. Thank you. Anybody else? Robin, what, um, what Judith had, uh, inquired about, uh, I'll do it formally. Would you be willing to amend your motion that, um, that it's, that we approve, um, requesting an opinion of value on the property instead of an appraisal? Would that be acceptable to you?
Yes, I, I think, uh, if we can amend the, to it, to opinion of value whenever the city is ready to move forward with that.
Okay. And Andrea, is that acceptable to you as a second? Okay, we have an affirmative affirmation on that. Any more discussion on that or should we call a question? Anybody? I'm looking. I don't want to miss somebody. Okay, then, uh, we have a motion to, uh, go ahead and approve, uh, asking the city to obtain an opinion of value on the Bysel parcels in order to continue the discussions with Steve Bysel. All in favor, raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I heard that one. Any opposed? Okay. Well, thank you guys for your support and I will keep you informed. Uh, but that'll be the next step. I'll follow up with Denise and Jillian on that.
Dave, I have a question.
Yes, Judy.
On the side of the boat. I just wondered, is there any possibility uh, before it gets cold and snowy and ugly of us, if we want to? And, and Steve, of course, would approve and maybe come with us, uh, to do that walk you did.
Oh, to do a walk. Okay. I'll put that on the list. Yeah. Yeah, kind of like we did at Black Canyon. We just did a committee meeting that was a walking tour.
It has to be, the problem is, am I right that if we, we have it on site, we have to have someone take, uh, notes and we have to open it to the public, right?
Yeah, we got to notice it, notice it up, just like we did on Black Canyon.
And he has to know that that could be, there could be some more people there.
Yeah. Yep, got their invitation. Okay. Well, thank you guys. I'll keep you informed. Um, again, I don't have the agenda in front of me. I think the next item is, is it budget? Who's got it? I thought I printed it out, but I can't find it here in the dark.
Twenty twenty-six budget, preliminary budget outline.
Thank you, Jillian. Um, we met on July twenty-three and, uh, all committee members were there. And thank you again for the level of participation we had. There was a lot of input. And it was confirming what are our priorities? Uh, and what I promised to do is prepare this sheet on page one forty-four of your packet. And these are my notes. And what I wanted to do is get this in writing in front of you so that you could pull out your pens, mark it up. Uh, it'll be on the September meeting agenda to have a more thorough discussion. But we're doing actually quite well on time here, guys. So, um, this evening. Um, again, this is just my outline and these line items that you see were in our budget last year. Uh, every one of these. And, um, Jillian, uh, contacted City Finance and got the estimate for revenues, uh, for the coming year. Um, those have been pretty accurate, by the way. They may be less so this year because of the change in the marijuana sales. But in prior years, they have been within five or 10,000, um, on the estimate. Uh, the fire mitigation on the one fifty, we used that number just because we received a bid for that. So we needed a placeholder. We're certainly under no requirement to approve that. Under permit management, um, that's on the agenda for us to discuss tonight. Is a proposal to reengage Kimberly Horn to start the permitting and the planning process. It's mainly working with C dot. Um, I certainly was disappointed to hear Denise say it took over a year to get permits on Manitou Boulevard. Goodness sakes from C dot. Um, but it's to start that process, uh, professional fees that could be redundant there. The training is, uh, the COSA, um, uh, attendance, uh, and Jillian is going to attend this year. It's still open for anyone else. Noxious weed, we have a proposal, a grant request in for the Conservation Service Corps, spend two weeks pulling weeds. And that is our grant match, uh, forty-five hundred for two weeks. Trail maintenance. Again, we're just pulling numbers from prior budgets. The REMFEE contract was twenty-seven thousand last year, so we grossed that up to thirty. Uh, we threw in additional maintenance for ten. And again, I need you guys to pull out your pens and, and adjust these numbers, um, because most of you have more experience than I do at this. Uh, land acquisition, this is the rollover balance from prior years, uh, the so-called war chest or the reserve. Um, this year we have an additional hundred and twelve thousand that could be added to that. Uh, this is based on the net sales tax revenues that have not been expended by OSAC. And then last, there's an administrative support allocation to help fund, uh, the Parks Department for all the assistance we receive for them. So those are the items. Uh, I did run this by Jillian. And so right now I don't think we're missing any line items, but I just want to emphasize this is very preliminary and it needs your input, um, criticism. So if you have any now, by all means, let me, uh, let me drop this share screen. I'm still learning how to do all this, guys. Yeah, there we go. And let's see, Judy, I saw your hand was up.
Uh, where, did we decide not to fund at all the Mile High Youth Corps?
See Jillian, can you help me on that one? It's, we've got, the Conservation Service Corps is different.
No, the Conservation Service Corps is the youth corps. So what we did was we applied for a grant through GOCO and the Conservation Youth Corps. And if we receive the grant, we'll use that, um, forty-two hundred dollar grant match to, to match the grant and that funds Mile High Youth Corps for the Noxious Weed Removal Project.
Oh, okay. I just, I didn't see it.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just trying to explain these line items because there's, there's not a lot of explanation here. Who else? Do we have some comments, suggestions, adjustments? Cause otherwise it'll come back to you looking like this for, uh, discussion and approval in September because we have to present this to council in October. So we're just trying to give lots of time, um, to get input and make any adjustments. Anything else? Anything jumping out at, at you old hands, TJ, Andrea, you guys have been around, Cheryl?
No, I'm just, uh, in previous years, we had that Creek Walks, um, stuff set aside, so I don't see it set aside here. Um,
Thank you. Thank you. That's an omission. Yeah, thanks.
Is it, is it in some other part of this or will that be coming out of the land acquisition fund? Where is that coming from?
Well, the, the hundred and thirty-eight is in this year's budget, twenty twenty-five. And this is to be next year's budget. So right now on this preliminary draft, we don't even have a line item for Creek Walk. So I'd, I would want to add that and discuss if we'd like to allocate some funds for Creek Walk. It'd be most likely six, not five. But that's, that's a, it's a great example of what I overlooked. Uh, but the one thirty-eight would not appear. I'm clear on that because that's being spent. Uh, we're recommending to council that they take that one thirty-eight.
Sounds great. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. It'll, uh, I'll make the change.
Why, why did you want to skip five, Dave? Is it, is there?
Apparently there's, my understanding is no plan for five. Jillian, can you help on that? Creek Walk five.
Yeah, right now the next phase on the docket is six. From my understanding, five is going to take quite a bit more planning and it's years out.
Oh.
But it wouldn't make sense to fund five, even though it comes numerically first, uh, it will be the last phase completed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I'm taking notes here. Um, again, how about trail maintenance? Is that a healthy enough set aside? Uh, we're not requiring ourselves to do REMFEE. I was just using that as a placeholder. What we expect from REMFEE, Jillian, help me on this. In October, November, we were gonna prime that for discussion in the agenda. And, um, see if we could identify specific projects for REMFEE and then we'd meet with them in January and continue the discussion, uh, or not, or not. Uh, but for now it's a placeholder.
Yeah, that's my understanding, Dave.
Okay. And then the additional, I mean, trail maintenance is one of the main things we do. So we just added, uh, additional funding for that. Um, just jumping ahead on the agenda a bit, the, um, just to give you a sense of numbers, you guys have looked at them if you've, because you've looked at the packet, but if you review the bids on the, um, Iron Mountain, they came in at thirteen thousand for the mechanical rework of thirteen hundred feet of trail. Uh, which is really the only way to do that. And then three thousand something, um, for a shorter segment. Um, the Trail Works repair, uh, a year ago was, or two years ago now, I guess, almost was twenty-seven thousand. Just giving you some numbers on that. Okay, well then I will make, uh, let me go back. I'm not looking at Zoom here. I'm looking at the document. Anybody else? Suggestions? Anything to look into? Uh, we don't have to have a number tonight, but if you want to hold a line item, just say so. We'll make it happen. Well, if you think of something, please, uh, send me an email, give me a call, uh, so that we can at least prompt it for discussion. Cause September, we do need to finalize this. Okay, again, no action required on this, um, tonight. And I'll make the revision that, um, TJ prompted. Okay. All right. Um, hang on, where are we?
We're on, uh, September OSAC meeting to move it to.
Yeah, I want to be real quick. I'm, um, I'm coming back from a trip. I get back on the twenty-eighth of September. Uh, I mean, I'm just one member of the committee, but I know I am flying in that afternoon. Um, so I'd be happy to move it to the next day. Um, and because I will be coming back from Europe, I will be worthless for a day or two. Um, and, um, so I don't know what y'all's schedule is. Uh, if I could ask an accommodation to move it to Tuesday or Wednesday of that week, let me bring up a calendar. Some of you may have conflicts though, so let me know if you were thinking of that.
I get, I get back.
Twenty-ninth is Monday. Go ahead.
I get back from Europe on the night of the twenty-ninth and.
You're about, I'm the twenty-eighth, so, uh.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
Can we, can we move it to the thirtieth or the first? Anybody have any preference?
That, that also.
Someone had it, someone had some Wednesdays that never work. Yeah, Cheryl.
I, well, I don't want Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday. Okay. I knew there were some conflicts out there.
Yeah, and Tuesday night is Yom Kippur, so I'm out.
Okay. Any constraints on Wednesday? I'm sorry?
Wednesday is fine for Robin.
Thank you. Andrea? Good, thanks. TJ, how's it looking?
No idea. I could never plan that far out.
Fair enough. I'm glad to have you. I'd want to hear about your field experience this summer. We'll have to, have to do that another time. But, um, anybody else? Jillian, any constraints for you on Wednesday?
Which, which Wednesday are we talking about?
It's September.
Talking about October one.
October first.
Rescheduling the September twenty-nine, Monday, September twenty-nine, meaning to Wednesday, October one. So there would not be a September meeting. It would actually happen in October.
So the OSAC meeting in September would originally be on Monday, the twenty-second, because OSAC is the fourth Monday of each month and technically the twenty-ninth is the fifth Monday. So.
You are absolutely right.
So does the twenty-second not work for folks?
Does not.
Okay, uh, I'm okay with Wednesday, October first.
Yeah. All right. No one else? Judith, how about you? You good?
I'm fine with, uh, yeah, I always keep Tuesdays open, even though the last Tuesday of the month, we're not always slated to have a meeting, but Wednesday would work. And then I'm assuming you'd go back to the fourth Monday in October for the October meeting.
Yeah, let's take a look. That would be one, two, three. That would be the twenty-second of October. So it would be three weeks. Yeah, let's take a look. That would be one, two, three. That would be the twenty-second of October, so it would be three weeks. One, two, three. You can do it either, twenty-second or the, uh, excuse me, Mondays, we're back to Mondays.
Well, it would be Monday, the twenty-seventh of October is the fourth Monday of.
That sounds real good to me. That's twenty-six days. That's enough time to get things done between meetings.
There you go.
So October one and October twenty-seventh. We got a consensus there. Thank you, guys, for accommodating Judy and me on that. Very good. Moving on. If I can find my agenda again. Got too many screens open. Okay. Bill, Bill Bauer. Bill Bauer, recall, recall, city council wanted us to do a questionnaire and, uh, suggested it be professionally, uh, conducted. We have a, um, proposal from Kim Lee Horn, who was the consultant on Black Canyon. To conduct that, uh, it's on page one forty-five of the packet. And, um. Just so I don't forget it, uh, also, uh, there was the letter from the Mobility and Parking Board supporting trail development. Actually, it wasn't supporting it, it was urging it. And, uh, that's on page one forty-six of the packet, but back to. Uh, I think Jillian, this kind of throws back to you under reports. Can you bring us up to date on that?
Yeah, so I reached out to a few firms to get prices for a professional survey, a professional public engagement survey to be done for Bill Bauer's open space. I only heard back from Kim Lee Horn, and that's the quote you're seeing in the packet for fifty-seven hundred dollars. So the next step for Bill Bauer Open Space, moving it forward in any capacity, would be to do this survey. Um, and that's kind of the, the question tonight. Does O S A C want to fund the professional survey for fifty-seven hundred dollars? To be completed in twenty-twenty-five, and this would include, um. Kim Lee Horn conducting, uh, a meeting to develop a really solid questionnaire that factors in all of the comments. And direction given from council at their meeting. Now, it's several months ago, um, but it would include. And be very robust. Uh, and I'm also meeting with REMFE next Tuesday to get a, a quote on what it would actually cost, or what it could cost. To develop a trail through that open space, just so we have it if we need it for the survey.
Yeah, I, I think that, uh, recall the committee was discussing that in order to give the citizens some, just kind of some scope or scale. What are we talking about? Is this, uh? You know, four workday hammer out a trail, or is this a, uh, two-year process, um, costing what, you know, roughly what? Uh, okay. Um, I think we have some, um, soft instructions from council that they would very much like to see this happen. Um, we do have a professional services line item in our budget to pay for this. This is the sort of professional services that that would apply to, um. So what are your, what are your comments? What are your thoughts? I will tell you, I'm, I'm inclined to, to approve it, um, because again, council, I think, has really given us some marching orders here, and, um. We've had lots of discussion about a questionnaire, and this is one very good way of getting it done, making it happen, and, and make it happen with a. What? Not robust, that's not the right word, um, just done properly. I think we can have some confidence in the results, or at least we'd have data that we could really discuss and, and measure. Uh, and that, that'll be helpful. What do you guys think?
What?
Judy, Andrea, T J, what are you thinking?
Being this, um, as well as the concept plan graphics to post with the digital survey. What's the?
Yeah, we know we needed to include a map. Yeah, map, location, uh, kind of a rough trail alignment. Uh, we need to make sure the people responding know what they're talking about by giving them a little bit of mapping. Jillian, was there any more than that? What are you thinking?
No, that's essentially it. It's really important that everyone taking the survey understands where this property is, and that was stressed. Um, I mean, that's vital. You have to know where the property is to make, to make, or to respond to the survey. So that's, that's what they mean by the concept plan. So showing where the property is, what a trail alignment could look like through the property. And that would be the concept plan, like where would the trail start, where would it end, how would folk, where would folks park, things like that. So that's, that's what they mean by that.
And then running a meeting with us to review the questions, uh, we'd get those in advance so we could provide some thoughtful input. And, um, get that finalized, and then they would actually conduct the survey. Uh, the city would help with that. It'd be on the city's website. And then they would provide a summary of findings.
And then what happens when? Someone says, well, I didn't, I didn't look at the city's website, and I didn't know about this. How do you make sure everybody in the city, so no one can say what I just said?
Well, I think the proposal was, instead of using the mails, because of the expense and the time delay. It would be on the city's social media site, it would be on the city's website. Uh, we don't have the Pike's Peak Bulletin right now. Uh, I don't know what other avenues there are to publish that, um. Judith, can you think of any other, uh, outreach avenues at the city?
Um, the last time I checked, which was, um, almost a year ago, sorry, my dog's talking to me, um. To send a postcard to all of the, uh, addresses in Manitou is about eleven hundred dollars, excuse me. Um, so it, it's about eleven hundred dollars, and, uh, unfortunately, the Pike's Peak Bulletin, we're seeing. A possibility of readership being down just because it is not a hard copy that comes, um, available to you is online. So other than that, it's only, it's going to be word of mouth and, um, on the website, so, um. Unless, you know, there, there, there needs to be a discussion about whether the O S A C wants to contribute or pay for. A postcard mailing, just keep in mind, you're looking at about, uh, eleven hundred dollars.
Thank you. That's real helpful. I had no idea what that would cost. Um, Judy, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I mean. I just don't want anybody to come or group to come and say, you know, we weren't told about this. We didn't know about this. Because then it really makes it, then there's, we've got conflict already. I'd just like to see it be. So, um. Encompassing in notification that really you'd have to be, you know, kind of deaf, dumb and blind not to know what's happening. Because I, I, I think that's a big issue. I don't, you know, I just, I don't know how to answer the question though either. I mean, I think social media is a great way to do it, and I think the city website is a great way to do it. And, uh. I'm just, I'm just hoping that we somehow get to cover it, so it's like, really? You drove up your street and you don't know about this, you know, kind of thing.
Well, I'm not sure I want to suggest it, but I've noticed the city has sometimes put up the V M S sign, the variable, um, sign machine. Um, for example, the big public meeting council had a month ago on the budget. Um, it was put up on the park, on the, uh, pool property saying, citywide meeting, city hall, be there, August first. So this one would say, Bill Bauer questionnaire, fill it out. Anyway, it's an idea.
That's actually a really great idea.
Yeah.
Is it?
I wish I would have thought about that. Kudos to you. It's worth looking, looking into because that would be very inexpensive.
It could be a real, be careful what you wish for, but, uh, all right, I'll, I'll put it down.
But it's the people that are going to complain, that you want to really include and say, you never, you didn't see this? You, you looked at it, you didn't see this? I, it's just, uh, a worry, I guess.
Okay. Well, back to our question though, um, what are your thoughts on approving an expenditure of fifty-seven hundred to hire Kim Lee Horn and consistent with their, um, their proposal? What are you thinking?
Did you say, in your, when you were talking, Dave, did you say, or Jillian, say, this is absolutely going to be done by the end of the year? Because this has been a long dance.
Yes, and that's why it's pretty important that we vote tonight, so I can move this forward. I don't think we have time to wait another month. To approve this, um, and I have all the quotes I'm going to get, so if we start now, it can be done by the end of the year. And Kim Lee Horn is very aware that we're trying to reach everyone in Manitou with this survey.
And it's, yeah, it's just a part of the public process, um. So I'd, I'd ask for a motion to approve the Kim Lee Horn, um. Proposal relating to the Bill Bauer questionnaire. Um, is anyone so inclined, or what are you thinking?
This is Robin. I will make a motion to approve the Kim Lee Horn, um, survey for the Bill Bauer trail.
All right.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Cheryl. Seconded by Cheryl Klein. And is there any further discussion on that? Anybody like to, any more questions for Jillian, or? Okay, well, let's call the question on that, uh, motion to approve the Kim Lee Horn proposal relating to Bill Bauer. All in favor, raise your hand.
I.
And it looks like we've got everyone there. Robin, do we have your vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's approved unanimously. Thank you.
I would add, I would add in the minutes, though, that not to exceed fifty-seven hundred dollars. Because that is, that's a budgeted amount for twenty-twenty-five. I, I would just indicate that because if you don't, then you're approving an open-ended, uh, approval.
All right, we'll make a note, not to exceed fifty-seven hundred. Anymore on the Bill Bauer? Uh, and again, remind you, we did receive the letter from Mobility and Parking recommending construction of that, uh, with all haste. But we're going to follow the city council's recommendation to do the survey. Okay. Let's close, close out Bill Bauer. No, Judy, go ahead.
I just, I'll ask it again. I ask every month. Do we ever get any movement from Mr. Rose on that pinch point?
I have not spoken with him. I've asked, uh, Tim Beeson to introduce me to Tim, uh, to Mr. Rose. Um, and so I will follow up on that before the next meeting.
Because we really don't have, we don't have a place to put a trail if we don't get that pinch point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on that. Uh, let me make a note. Any, anything else on Bill Bauer? Going once, going twice, okay. Um. Black Canyon, uh, fire mitigation quotes, uh, page one forty-seven of your, uh, packet. Is a proposal, um, for the fire quote. It also has the scope of work. Jillian, thank you for getting that. Um, I was concerned as to what are we asking someone to do? The gist of that, it's a fifty percent reduction in fuels and elimination of ladder fuels. Uh, but the scope of work does include, um, it's repeated a number of times, at least three, avoid damage to existing trails. Um, I think there's a requirement in there for a pre-work walkthrough, um. So that we can, uh, flag and it make sure they know what the. The essential trail elements, the roundabout and so forth, these areas are not to be disturbed. Those are mentioned in the scope of work. And, um, before you then, as a question of whether to, uh, adopt a motion to approve a bid from Front Range Arborus. For fire mitigation at Black Canyon. So let's open that up to questions. Again, page one forty-seven of the packet.
Well, and, and Dave, what I'm looking, uh, for from O S A C is an amount to fund. I do want to leave. Which company we fund up to the discretion of the fire department. Uh, but right now, Front Range is the lowest bid, and I did chat with Mike Willie, Lieutenant Mike Willie before this. He's comfortable with both companies. He thought they both submitted really good proposals. So it is up to the fire department who they go with, but it would be O S A C saying, we vote to approve X amount of funding. So that's what we're looking for here, um, and both companies pro- provided really good proposals. So just putting that out there.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for correcting me. I, I had forgotten about the second bid, uh, that just came in, and, um. But also the process, this is going to be conducted by the fire department. Um, we're in our usual advisory, um, role here. Uh, but we're also funding it because there is no other source of funding right now, uh, if we want to get this going this year. Discussions, um, Jillian, um, can we go back to Deer Park? Uh, the Deer Park Open Space. Was mitigated over the last year, and that was very accessible. Uh, it's got a big ravine in it, but it was accessible. Off of, uh, Crystal Hills, and, um. That was running at, um, I think thirty-five hundred an acre or something like that, uh, but it was accessible, and, uh, that made a big difference. The. In Jillian's conversation with Front Range, and Jillian, step in here, uh, they were concerned about the lack of a road access. That really makes this more difficult and more expensive.
Yeah, this is a difficult property, um, and they might, there might be an area where they need to, to construct a temporary road to get in. Um, if they can't do that, that would make this project much more expensive, um, but they would. I mean, they, we would be involved with the process, and the fire department would be involved, of course, uh, but they would need access to the property with some sort of machines.
Again, the scope of work is to mulch this up, uh, not to burn it, uh, mulch it up and, um, spread it out. So it does need some heavy equipment up there to do it. Um, I know it seems like we're throwing a lot of money around tonight, but this is what our business is, is taking these sales tax funds and applying them thoughtfully. It's our job to make thoughtful recommendations, um. What are you guys thinking?
I think, I'm sorry, T J, um, I think that doing this now, I mean, it's only get more, going to get more expensive as time goes on, um, in the future. And also, if they're bringing machinery and stuff in there, I'd rather they do that now than when we already have an established trail system in there that we'd have to come back and repair. So I'm for, um, I'm for getting this done tonight.
Yeah, I, I too would support that for just those reasons. Um, I'd, I'd support that authorization of. Jillian, do we need to? I'd say, do we need to? Do you think we should pick a number in between? Should we authorize a hundred and sixty, a hundred and fifty-five? One fifty is the low bid, um. Or do we just do it right at one fifty?
I mean, we have the, don't we have a hundred and fifty in the budget? Is that what our budget is, a hundred and fifty thousand?
Hang on, I, I do have that handy.
And, yeah, Dave, you added the one fifty for twenty-twenty-six for fire mitigation, but we could get this done this year. The, the scope of. Does say it'll be completed before the end of the year.
Uh, in the budget for this year, we do not have a specific, uh, I got to look at two documents, but the first one says, uh, do not find specific fire mitigation. Uh, we allocated seventy thousand this year for trail building and maintenance. I don't know if you could call it inside that. We certainly have adequate funds inside the reserve, the four hundred thousand dollar reserve. That was for acquisitions. Uh, this is an extraordinary expense. It is going to happen again some years down the road. And of course, we have lots of other open space to do this to as well. But do we have a specific line item? No, we do not, answer Paul.
And we don't, we don't need a, a specific line item to stay within budget. It's, it's just a guidance that. But, eh, again, if our overall budget is a certain amount, then, then we can move from one category to another.
Okay, thank you. Um, looking at the historic budget notes, um. Yeah, we just haven't spent this kind of money other than on an acquisition. No, we haven't. Okay. Well, I need to ask.
I have a question on that, and, 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 you know, for all the years I've been on council, this is a really, this brings up a really interesting topic, Jillian, because. If you're talking about a six-figure, um, expenditure that wasn't approved in the. Previous budget, do you need to, um. Notify council? I mean, it, that's, it raises a good question. I, I, I would say, um.
Why not?
What, when, um, so with regards to the city administrator, um, anything under. Forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars does not need the approval of council. But if you're looking at a line item that's six figures that wasn't approved, you might want to just bring that back. Uh, uh, if I would, I would just as a protectionary measure. Um, Jillian, your thoughts? Because I, just, just as a, uh. Just as a courtesy, if nothing else, and a, and a transparency issue, I should say.
Yeah, and this, the contract would need to go to council absolutely for approval because of the price tag. Yeah, and this, the contract would need to go to council absolutely for approval because of the price tag. Judith, would you recommend bringing it to council before we even go like draft the contract? Or just bringing the contract itself to council for approval?
I I think all that would be required in this. In this instance, is if the OSAC approves this. Just to send an email to council as a courtesy. This is a courtesy email that a contract is coming to you for this amount of money and it doesn't need to. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put any more energy into it. That just a heads up that we're bringing this to you because it's not, it wasn't already previously approved.
Okay, perfect. Yep.
Yeah, I think it's good advice. I mean. Everyone on this committee has said fire mitigation is a major topic that we have to address. And so we should let council know we're doing it and here's how we're doing it and. Fire Department is right there with us and they're going to coordinate it. So thank you, Judith. Good process on that. All right, do we have? Anyone care to make a motion to authorize a specific dollar amount to fund fire mitigation to be managed by the fire department on the Black Canyon? Open space.
I have one question. This is Robin. With the fire department and of course, we have a lot of. Land that really needs to be fire mitigated. Is there possibly? Another piece of property that? We should really be focusing on first for this kind of money. I'm I'm just. This is just a lot of money. I want to really think through this first.
Yeah, let me, let me flip that, let me, let me flip that to Judy because Judy had discussions on Mike Willie on just that question. And Judy, I recall your answer, but go ahead. On priority.
The thing that Mike said was if he had to pick a priority, this would be it. Black Canyon would be it. I wasn't listing any. I just asked him. And he said, well, as far as he was concerned, this was a. This is a high priority topic for him.
Okay, I just wanted to verify again that.
I'm sure, I'm sure. I was thinking you were going to say, well, for a hundred and fifty thousand, we could do ten parcels. But the question is in terms of. You know, where are we going with this parcel, which we hope is to trail development? I guess that's safe to say. We can't do that. Productively, financially, productively, prudently, unless we get it mitigated first. Because then we're going to be going back, building trails and then doing it. It's not, it's not the way to do it. So. You know, are you planning on building trails up there in your lifetime? Well, if you are. You might want to get it mitigated first and that's, and he said it was a big project. He said it's difficult. And as TJ said during the meeting, you know, it just gets more expensive. The longer we delay these big projects. The more expensive it gets. And I'm not, I'm not advocating, I'm just telling you what the conversation was like. And I I think he's, he's just being honest about it. I'm sure there's lots of projects he'd like to do, but and that's the other thing I'm thinking about. Now that you brought it up, Robin, is, you know, it says it's going to be managed by the fire department. Well, how much time? Is Mike Willie going to have? To do this and. You know, I was just thinking, well, fall. Is this a good time? You know, late fall, and maybe it's a great time. Because we've had fortunately, a lot of rain, but a lot of the parts they haven't. And we're wet. And maybe this is a good time, you know, to hope that we have an average. Fall. And they can get up there in good weather, but we've had substantial rain on in manitude, period. And that helps with the water table and also with the. Lessening of fire exposure, period. These are just all thoughts I'm having, know that, you know. I don't know how people feel about them, but that's what I'm thinking. It is a lot of money. It's scary. I agree. Does that help? No.
No, it does. It answers the question, Robin's question. Robin, any follow up on that or are you okay?
No, that that answered my question. If if Mike thought that that was the top priority, then that that answers it.
So we want to be making a motion for. Front range since they're the. Lower bid.
Well, actually, Gillian has asked us to actually authorize a funding, a dollar amount. As opposed to a specific bid and instead defer to the fire department to let them make the final selection.
Right, so so we could. We could commit to the lower bid and then it would be up to the fire department. If they wanted to pay. The the difference, they could go to the high bid, but you know, we're not saying they have to use the low bid, but that's the amount that we're authorizing.
I move that we. Approve. Or. Propose to the city a hundred and fifty thousand for fire mitigation.
On Black Canyon.
Yeah, they were a hundred and fifty thousand five hundred, I think. Do we want to?
Oh, it's, yeah, it is a hundred and fifty thousand five hundred. Sorry.
Motion by Robin.
No, Cheryl.
Cheryl, I'm sorry. Not looking right here. Thank you, Cheryl.
And I'll second.
Do we have a second on that?
TJ.
By TJ, second by TJ. Thank you. Any more discussion on approving funding of a hundred and fifty thousand for fire mitigation on Black Canyon? Process continued to be managed by the fire department. Any more discussion? Anyone? Not seeing any? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve? Raise your hand. Yes, I'm Robin too. Thank you. Okay. Approved. Julian, is there any more detail on that you need?
Nope, that's it. And that's exciting. I'll let Mike know tomorrow and I'll give an update at the. I guess it's the September meeting in October, but I might send you guys an email update before then, just to keep you posted. When we start moving. So yeah, this is great. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for getting a bid. Next, Kimley Horn. I'm trying to remember how this. What the genesis of this was. I think it was between Jillian and me in a meeting thinking, okay, how do we move forward on Black Canyon? Trail building, what's the next step in the process? And we were reminded by someone that getting the C dot right of way permit. Is no small matter. And then who's going to do that? That's a rather technical process. And so Jillian suggested we may want to consider. Engaging a consultant and so back to Kimley Horn. To start the process of permitting for C dot. C dot owns, actually owns. That portion of El Paso. Street. That we need to cross. So it's a permitting process. Then also C dot owns, we think, the right of way. That we would be walking on a long Black Canyon road. It really depends on how wide that right of way is and where the curb is. And then you get to some form of a bridge. To cross the drainage way. That's going to need some preliminary design work. And so the concept is, does it make sense for us to hire Kimley Horn? To manage the C dot permitting for those two purposes and also initiate some bridge design. Because I can't do it and unless one of you has the skills to do it. Jillian can't do it either. Her her plate is often pretty full. So this, and also it was Denise Howell who said, guys, you have the money. You should consider hiring a consultant to just get this moving. So Jillian and I ran with that. We met with Jim Howke. Just kind of brainstormed over what this would look like. And have prepared just a preliminary proposal. I'm sorry, I don't have the page number down for you on that. But that's the the concept there and it would be to authorize spending. A dollar amount here, suggestions up to five thousand dollars for it to provide on its hourly basis. The permitting. And. Start the bridge design, start the discussion on bridge design to see what obstacles we're going to run into. So that's the concept. Julian, any more on that or anyone?
And just to clarify, there are a lot of projects going on in Manitou Springs. The Parks Department does not have the bandwidth to to manage the implementation of the Black Canyon Master Plan right now. So what this would do is it would speed up the process and it would help us with the technical side. So connecting with C dot, connecting with the city of Colorado Springs and giving us a very specific action plan for how to move forward. So I think it would be a great use of funds. The contract we would have is an on-call hourly. So all OSAC would need to do is vote to fund X amount in twenty twenty-five and X amount in twenty twenty-six. And what we're thinking is around five thousand dollars each year. And that would get us where we need to be with the master plan. So if we want to spend less, we just let Kimley Horn know, like, hey, we don't need you for this portion of the plan. But they have in their proposal offered everything they can provide. So that's kind of, that's what we're looking at.
Just to build on that, it was also Denise and Jillian's in my meeting with her where Denise said the new city engineer. Is is just backlog. He has so many public works matters. That really are public safety issues on his plate. He does not have time to jump into the C dot permitting either. And again, Denise's recommendation, guys, you should hire someone to do this. So that's where this is coming from. Otherwise, it's just not going to start. And. The fire mitigation is going to take a couple of months anyway. And so these two processes, fire mitigation and starting the permitting. Can be running parallel. So that's the idea. So. Again, a proposal to spend, spend some of the money. This is really a pretty amazing follow-up on our budget meeting of July twenty-three that here we are on August twenty-five. Rapidly spending the money that has been accruing. But that's what this money is for. But again, what what is your comments? What are your concerns? Alternatives, what are you thinking?
This is Robin. I think we're talking about two things, right? We're talking about the C dot issue. But then you mentioned the a plan for for the bridge. And should we get, is that, those are two different things, right?
They are, and I I may have said that a little too strongly. It's not to prepare construction drawings for the bridge abutment and the bridge. It's to begin those preliminary discussions with. The civil engineer to say, what would we need? To do the bridge abutment? What would we need to do the bridge design? What are we talking about? It's to get some details. On paper. So that we, it's it's the first step of moving toward a bridge design alignment location. And then the same with C dot permitting. Except Jillian, my my understanding is that Kimberly Horn would actually make the initial inquiries to C dot. Have the initial discussions. Outline what is needed and then. Once we approve it, approve the next task, it would be to start that permitting, I think. It's kind of two phases there. Is that right?
Yeah, kind of two phases and we would share that information with our. Public Services Director slash City Engineer, so he would be involved, just not in a in a lead capacity. And that's where Kimley Horn would come in handy.
But then when we. When when we get to the bridge, we can get a couple quotes for actually building the bridge. Is that right?
Oh, yeah, that would be down the road. That'd be like phase three or so. Phase, phase one, starting the discussion. Phase two is design. Phase three is contracts.
Well, I I'd like to make a motion that we. Approve five thousand. For. You know, whoever the city decides to contract with. For working with C dot for the easements.
All right. Just taking notes here. Is there a second? Someone care to second that?
Could you? Could you repeat that? I got lost.
Yeah, make a motion to approve five thousand dollars this year for. A contract. With the company the city decides to go with. For working with C dot for an easement. For the Black Canyon Open Space.
Yeah, easement or permits, yeah. It could be an easement, could be, but it'd be.
Being Kimley Horn because that's who we're, we've been working with.
Yeah, Julian, what's your preference there?
I think it's okay to mention Kimley Horn. They're the only ones who provided quotes for this work and they're they're, that's who we're asking to fund. Specifically this evening. So I think it's okay to mention them and I would say up to five thousand dollars because we might not need to spend that much this year.
Well, let's hope not. I'll make a an amendment to the motion that it to include Kimley Horn for up to five thousand.
All right, thank you. I have it. Do we have a second? I see by Judy, Judy Karnick seconding Robin Kovats's motion. To authorize up to five thousand for Kimley Horn as a consultant for the Black Canyon Open Space. Specifically for the C dot permitting. Any more discussion on that, concerns?
Can I ask a clarification question on that? My understanding that. Jillian indicated five. An amount not to exceed five thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five and an amount not to exceed five thousand for twenty twenty-six. Was that my understanding or was I wrong on that?
No, that's what she said. I think the motion's just for this year and we'll return to that next year question in the September budget. I think for now, the motion right now is just for this year.
Thank you.
Is that right?
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Judith. Any more discussion, concerns? We're making good progress here, guys. I know it's eight twenty, but we're doing really well here. Anymore?
Did you get a second?
We did, second, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Judy, it was Judy. Thank you, Cheryl, for asking, keeping me focused here. Any more discussion on that? Not seeing anybody? We'll call the question on Robin's motion to authorize up to five thousand dollars for Kimley Horn as a consultant on the Black Canyon Open Space. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Robin. We have approval on that. And moving on to our bid, our bid, Iron Mountain Trail Repair. Paul, you want to introduce these? Can I call on you on that while I get a drink of water?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
I'll just share.
Yeah, please do.
So this is the main section. It's up on the top of Iron Mountain. Really, this year with some of those heavy rains, the, this is an old double track that's cupped, so the water is now pretty much running the whole length of this. So. The shell surface now is. Not even small gravel, it's large gravel. And it's a little. Not super comfortable to to walk on and kind of difficult to bike on as well, so.
Chunky, chunky.
So we we met with Trailcraft and what was the other company?
Trailworks.
Trailworks, okay, so we have not. Received the. Oh, sorry, we got the quote from Timberline, okay.
There are dollar amounts on this here. Two components to this bid.
Yeah, so the. This section, this section here, they're quoting fifteen thousand. We asked them also this section here, which is primarily a dirt road, but it's also but got a much larger drainage. On it now, after that large rain that flooded, caused some flooding there in town. So that we asked them to quote those two pieces separately. So fifteen thousand for this section. And the idea would be that they would. The trail would, instead of, you know, it's it's on a double track and so the trail would kind of, they'd make the trail so it kind of weave back and forth. Across that double track, so when it's done, it won't look like just such a straight. Fire double track anymore. Hopefully it'll look a little bit more like a. A wide, single-track trail. And then they were thirty five hundred on on that second section, that that kind of dirt section leading up from the the work done last year. Up to Iron Mountain. And did we? Do we know, are we not getting a contract from? Do we know, are we not getting a contract from, uh? Trailworks or? Or quote, are we, we're still?
I, I prompted Traction Trailworks three times before this meeting. I have not received any quotes from them. The only quotes we've received are from Timberline Trailcraft.
Okay.
Yeah, for the rest of the committee, uh, Paul and I walked, um, these two trail segments with representatives from Timberline. Who submitted the bid. Trailcraft is a division of Timberline and, um, and also Trailworks. So we walked it with both of them on different days. Trailworks seemed interested in, um, we just haven't gotten anything back from them. Jillian, would you recommend if, if the committee is so inclined to authorize, uh, up to a dollar amount again and leave this open in terms of who the contractor is? After three tries of getting a response, I'm not real optimistic we're gonna get one.
I think it would be a good idea to move forward with this project.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's what I would like to do. I did give our other company. The deadline multiple times and. I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with this one if OSAC wants to fund this project this year.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is lower than what I was expecting. So this is a good, I, I, I'm happy with the, the quote that we got here and. I think we wanna give them the cha- the opportunity to get started before we, uh, lose the weather.
Additionally, um, I was looking through their portfolio and it looks like Tony Boone works for them as well and. I worked with him on the initial. Uh, mechanical work and corridor clearing of that many, many years ago. So he's got experience getting up there and working that exact section of trail as well. So he's got good experience.
Yeah, I've heard that name before, yeah. Uh, positively. The, and Timberline, uh, as we were walking it, uh, the Timberline guy is Colton, I believe is his first name and. He had bid on that, uh, Oak Ridge, um, erosion repair that Trailworks did a year and a half ago. Uh, so they, they have bid before. Uh, Timberline also did the incline repair over two years. They do enough trail work that they've created a separate division now that they call Trailcraft. So what we're looking for, if a member is so inclined, Paul, perhaps you, to make a motion to approve, um, funding. The, um, one or two parts or both of the Timberline Trailcraft proposal.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, Judy.
What? Did I, did I miss that in this packet? Did they? Or Jillian, did you discuss with them a starting and finishing time?
We, we just.
I'm not hearing.
During, we discussed that during the site visit. I didn't include that in the packet.
Could you tell me what that is?
Oh, the, the deadline would be the end of the year.
For, for it to be finished?
Correct.
Yeah, both these guys thought, Paul, help me here, the, under, about a week, about a week or so, I think.
Yeah, it's a short project.
Yeah, it's a week or two project, so.
Okay. Judy, does that help you?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'd be spending this now to be completed this year. One to two week project, depending on weather.
And is that? Is that working by themselves? Working with volunteer groups or just by themselves?
Just by themselves. Yeah, we, we looked at this section with Remphi earlier this year and, and really kind of agreed that this just isn't an appropriate volunteer project. That, that we actually need to be moving dirt in amount that's just not. Feasible with, by hand.
It's also very rocky and would just be very difficult with hand tools. So this is why this lends itself to a mechanical repair. So this is, uh, an excavator. A mini excavator. With a, uh, experienced operator. Like Tony Moore, someone who knows what he's doing.
And that's how the tread was initially done up there too, at that. Time, so same, same equipment, same methods and stuff.
Yeah, thank you. Alright. Any other questions, concerns? Again, we're looking for a motion to approve either one or both, um, depending on what your pleasure is.
I'll motion to appro- prove both. Uh, bids.
Paul can. Paul, go in and eliminate, if you would, your share screen so we can see everyone here for a minute. Thank you. Um, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second. This is Robin.
Robin, second, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the Timberline Trailcraft bid for both segments. Fifteen thousand, two thirteen on the large segment and thirty-five fifty-eight. Three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight on the smaller segment. Uh, for the work to be completed this year. Any more discussion on that? Not seeing any, alright. If we could call the question on that, motion to approve, all, raise your hand, let us know.
Aye.
See, okay, and Robin, was that you speaking?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you, guys. Uh, let me find my agenda again.
I think it's, uh, it says, now it says budget. Twenty twenty-six, final draft.
This is for the, uh, we, we rarely have anything to put here. But we have some placeholders for the next meeting. Uh, we're gonna return to the twenty twenty-six budget and, uh, I'm gonna make the revisions that we talked about. And we're gonna discuss it a bit more thoroughly. We're gonna make a recommendation to council. We really have to do that. On this, uh, October one meeting. The trail mapping is the visitor center has told us that the, uh, trails and park map that they hand out, they are out of them. And we need to consider whether we wanna reprint it. Do we wanna go only digital? Uh, if so, what, where are the trail maps? Are they adequate? I'll make sure that we circulate. I did get a copy, Jillian, of the trail map from, uh, Danu Fat of the Parks Board. And I will drop that by Parks. And then we're change, we, we've already changed the September meeting. So these were just placeholders, Judy. So we, um. Just, we don't lose sight and we know what we're gonna talk about, uh, next month.
And Dave, I already have a copy of that trail map. Someone dropped it off on my desk. I thought it was you.
No, that's, that's Danu. She gets credit for that.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, um, anything that I missed, uh, you guys always need to check me and make sure I don't skip something. I think we've covered everything on the agenda. And, um. Any other comments or anything? I'm pleased, guys, two and a half hours. This is one heck of a meeting and we spent a lot of money. So I appreciate. The comments. Judith, thank you for your suggestions, uh, on a couple of things in terms of process, um, particularly that city council circling back on the, uh, spending six figures. That's. Thoughtful, to say the least. Anything else? And then last, any, uh, if you have suggestions for the next meeting. Please make sure you get them to Jillian or me so they show up on the agenda. About twenty minutes ago, I got an email from, uh, Marion, uh, Sarusi saying, uh, thanks for letting me participate. She had to log off. And I, I know Cassandra had to do it earlier too, so that'll be on the agenda. Um, a motion to recommend them.
Are we supposed to vote on accepting those applications?
I believe so. That's my recollection.
It's mine too.
We make a, a reference to city council. Judith, does that sound right? I think so.
Have they officially applied?
They have, yes. We received applications and they were participating tonight. And, uh, and we can certainly ask any of them follow-up questions if something prompts any of you. But then we would make a vote.
Sound really, they sound interested and qualified.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the same process we did with Paul about five months ago, six months ago. Uh, he applied. And then, um, we made a reference to city council. Then they appear in city council, introduce themselves, council. Usually thanks them and ask them some questions and, uh, then makes a vote to appoint. Okay.
So that is goes on next month?
Yes. Yeah, Andrea mentioned that process earlier today in our, in our meeting. Last thing, bear with.
I will, I will say one thing about board, board applicants and, and this has been a trend that I'd like to see change and that is. When an applicant makes an application for a regular voting. Of, of position, we tend to have them speak and when they are applying for an alter, to, alternate position, a lot of times we'll just. Have them on the consent calendar. And I think that's not fair. I think what, we should really have them come and introduce themselves. So that, that's just my, my little thing that I would love to see that, um, not, not be put on the consent calendar if you have an option to do that.
Well, I, when I met with both Cassandra and, uh, Marion, I did say the expectation is they would appear in person.
Great, that's awesome.
Okay, well then we'll suggest that. Let me, uh, you guys indulge me a minute. TJ, tell me how your summer's going. Where you been? You been Dakota? Where you been?
Digging up crocodiles in South Dakota.
Hey, you still got both hands and both feet?
There you go, good. Can, can any of us match that? Anyone got a, a sentence that has that much intrigue in it, digging up crocodiles and in a desert? Okay. Alright, anything else? If not, I think we're adjourned. Any objection? Seen none? Alright, thank everyone for your participation.
Thanks.
Take care. Thank you, Jillian.
Hi Judith.
Day, uh, good night. Really well-run meeting, Dave. Wow, good job.
Thank you. Again, you guys gotta help me, help me through anytime.
Good night, everybody.